Okay, I'd like to call this January 9th, 2023 Concord Select Board Meeting to Order. And our first item of business is to enter Executive Session.
Move to enter Executive Session pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Estebok Road, Town of Concord versus Rasmussen and all. As a Chair declares it an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, and we will be returning to open session.
All right, thank you, and I do so declare, and we need a roll call vote.
We need a second, I think.
Okay, for a second.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Forget, okay, Linda, Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
We should remember their names right now.
Yeah, there, we don't sit in order, so it's confusing. Aye.
Okay, we will now be entering Executive Session, and we will return afterwards to public session. Thank you. Okay, thanks for your patience, everyone. We are resuming our open session this evening after an executive session that we held about Estebok Road. And in fact, the first item that was on our agenda was a legal update and discussion of trail signage. And I should just note that during our executive session, we did discuss potential signs. And what we decided was that we would like to reach out to the defendants and to discuss the possible implementation of signage and well as other aspects of the judge's recent ruling, because we would like to take a collaborative approach if we can. So we will be reaching out and hope to have a meeting on that front. So now, let's move to the consent agenda. So can I have a motion?
Okay, there was one very brief typo that Shannon and I worked on on one of the minutes. I don't remember which one.
It was on February 14th. And then Harry sent me two by email this afternoon, too.
And so, can we?
So I also have some comments if we're doing that now?
Should we just pull those and then look at them next time with the amendments?
If I could just point out what that is, that might be helpful. On the minutes from October 4th, 15th, February 14th, and March 7th, noting the roll call vote, both for the beginning of the meeting and when we went into Executive Session are missing.
Okay.
Okay, so are we approving this consent calendar except for certain minutes?
Except for the, was it the 4th, 15th, 14th, and 7th? Or is it just the 15th, 4th, 14th, and 7th?
Well, I think we can agree to just add that roll call vote.
Okay, all right, we could, we could do that, except for that you said there were some other comments.
There are two very small comments.
But we should know what the nature of those are.
So the first four, yeah. Unless there's another one?
I have some.
Okay.
Most of the ones that I sent had to do with essentially typographical issues, like with the Hutchins Farm.
There's, Chapter 40B was not capitalized, so he capitalized that in March 28th. And he noted that we typically don't summarize the content of the TM report in that set. And then in the March 7th, he said partials should consistently be referred to as double A and double B, and not, they were both not capitalized. So he would like both of those capitalized, and same with Chapter 61A.
Okay, well, those, I think with those changes, we can accept those minutes.
Right, and then there was one other typo that I can't remember if.
It was in the ARPA discussion.
Oh, right.
It was, July was listed, and it should have been January. That's what Terry corrected.
That's right.
Okay, so with those noted corrections, the roll call vote, the January versus July date for the ARPA discussion, and the capitalization issues relative to legislation.
Okay, with those changes, I move the consent calendar agenda as shown in the packet.
Give a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks very much. Now to the town managers.
Thank you and good evening. Referring to the report of January 6th, a lot of information in there from the town clerk that I think is pertinent, so I'm just going to go through that. Voter registration deadline for the January 19th special town meeting is 5:00 PM. Well, it was 5:00 PM today, Monday, January 9th, so hopefully.
So you're either in or you're not.
Hopefully, everybody registered. The 2023 census forms were mailed to households on January 4th. Residents are asked to please sign and return their census as soon as possible. The back of the form has a roster-style vote-by-mail application for voters' convenience. The deadline to apply to vote by mail for the February 16th special town election is February 9th, and the deadline for the March 28th annual town election is March 17th. The town caucus will be held at 7:00 PM on January 30th in the townhouse. And the purpose of this meeting is to nominate candidates for the three offices appearing on the annual town election ballot, moderator one seat, select board one seat, and school committee one seat. Candidates for town office may also take out nomination papers at the town clerk's office and gather signatures of at least 50 registered Concord voters. Nomination papers are now available and must be returned by 5:00 PM on Tuesday, February 7th. I know everybody on this board knows, but in case somebody in the public did not hear, our police chief, Joe O'Connor, retired on December 22nd. We had a very nice breakfast reception for him that was put together at the last minute when he finally agreed to give people the opportunity to thank him for his service. As many of you know, while he was here for nine years, he had over 35 years in public safety, and we wish him well in his retirement. Our former captain, Tom Mulcahy, is serving as interim police chief. He was appointed on December 23rd. Some updates from our recreation department. Summer camp positions have been posted. We have 48 positions that need to be filled in order to provide our summer camp, which runs for nine weeks and serves over 2,000 campers. So anybody who has, knows of people who are interested in that type of seasonal work opportunity, please go on our website and fill out an application. The BD Center had its first annual Swim with Santa event on December 17th. That was a sold-out event, and people are already looking forward to it next year. BD Center is also still in need of lifeguards. We have made significant progress, but there are still many vacant positions. You do have to be certified to be a lifeguard, but we are offering free lifeguarding classes to anybody who's interested. BD Center is also serving as a pickup site for free COVID-19 test kits. We did have some here as well before the holidays, and probably will start that up again. And that is it for me.
Okay, any questions for the town manager? All right, well, I'll start by just noting that I got COVID over our holiday break and spent much of the time in quarantine, and that there is definitely out there. And that unfortunately, the rapid tests are much less effective than they were. They're not very useful anymore for kind of pre-screening. They really are more, at this point, it seems to confirm that your symptoms are COVID. And so it is something to be aware of, I think, as we make it through the season. There's a new variant out there that's quite contagious. So the other thing is about the special town meeting. And just again, to remind people that next Thursday, January 19th, is the special town meeting. And I would actually suggest that we, as a board, meet in a half hour before the meeting, just given the kind of dynamic nature of things, where we will be getting these 90% estimates. So.
Can we ask the moderator this time to have the select board to sit together at a table at the head of the hall, rather than just have the chair sitting up in the front?
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, I think that's been our tradition.
But it wasn't in the last, it wasn't last year.
Okay, right.
Or, I mean, the last actual physical town meeting we had, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Also, given what you just said about COVID, I'm not sure if there's, what, if any, is the mask requirement or suggestion or whatever, and whether the moderator is making any determination on that.
Well, I believe that there have been arrangements made for different rooms having different ground rules.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think.
Same as last time, then, all right. And when are those 90% estimates coming in?
The Middle School Building Committee is scheduled to review them this Friday, the 13th, 7:30 AM.
Friday, the 13th, okay.
Okay, so, all right. Then let's move on to the next item on the agenda, the conservation restriction for the Ralph Waldo Emerson homestead.
Okay, and we have Delia K., our Natural Resources Director, available remotely.
She was when we first.
She was, yeah, she was.
We're significantly ahead of the posted schedule, so it's one of the.
Want to do the nominations or something like that?
Dave's here.
Yeah, or we could put Dave Wood right on the spot. He just walked in the room, but let's let him boot up his laptop. And so why don't we handle the nominations and appointments?
Okay, nominations to the Concord Housing Development Corporation, Julie McClure of 2128 Main Street, for a term to expire May 31st, 2026.
Okay, and appointments?
Wes Concord Advisory Committee, Nicole Hammond of 76 Prairie Street, for a term to expire April 30th, 2025. Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee, Timothy Taylor of 14 Concord Green, Unit 8, for a term to expire May 31st, 2024. And Historic Districts Commission, Walter Clay of 675 Sudbury Road, as an associate member, to represent the planning board for a term to expire January 1st, 2024. Catherine Mast of 66 Blue J Drive, as a member to represent the Concord Free Public Library, for a term to expire January 1st, 2028. William Hyatt of 1123 Monument Street, as an associate member, to represent the Concord Free Public Library, for a term to expire January 1st, 2028.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Delia, are you ready? We are ahead of schedule, significantly ahead of schedule. So if you're available, we can proceed with the conservation restriction.
Excellent, thank you.
And even just before we get started, I wanted to say that the Thoreau Amble is a miracle of a trail. I mean, that it is so close to Concord Center, and that as you walk down and through it, you're in the woods, and it is like going back in time. And then you end up and you can see the canon, and it's really, it's really wonderful.
So, Delia K., Natural Resources Director. We have a lot of people to thank for that amble being in place, the Emerson Association, but also Gordon Bell, who was trustee of the land trust when we were working to put that whole patchwork together. Jay Kyes, who is still with the land trust. There was a lot of people who worked to make that happen. So I'm glad that people enjoy it. It really is a, it's a remarkable trail.
I recommend a loop, beginning at the town forest parking area, going through that amble, and then down Cambridge Turnpike, and then in on the trail that I think that Thoreau called the Hubbard Road or something like that.
Yeah.
With this giant pine on it, and it takes you back. It's a little long, but it's nice, and you get to see our beautiful Cambridge Turnpike that was recently renovated at significant cost.
And where's the canon?
The canon is at Haywood Meadow, yeah, at the edge, right at the edge of Haywood Meadow, where you come out there.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, it's a great trail.
You can stop at the Concord Museum or the Emerson House. It's really incredible. All right, so.
Okay, so, thank you, Delia K., Natural Resources Director, and I am happy to talk with you about the acquisition of the conservation restriction for the, a portion of the Emerson land at 18-28 Cambridge Turnpike. I do anticipate that Ellen Emerson and Bay Bancroft from the Ralph Waldo Emerson Memorial Association will be here, as well as Marissa Miller with Miaries and Hamilton. They are the firm that is representing the Emerson Association. I'll give you a little bit of background. The Emerson family and the Emerson Association, which was formed in 1930, have long been philanthropic contributors to public and private causes for more than a century. Their contributions include Emerson Fields, which was gifted to the town in 1887, 40 acres to build Emerson Hospital in 1910, 80 acres around Walden Pond that they donated along with the Forbes and Haywood families in 1922. The land on which the Concord Museum sits was granted to the Concord Museum. It was the Concord Antiquarian Society at the time in 1930. And I think everybody, many of you know, that the actual study of Ralph Waldo Emerson is housed at the Concord Museum, and in the Emerson House is a replica. They also donated the Concord Police and Fire Station land in the 1950s, and a revocable easement was granted to the town for the Emerson Thoreau Amble in 19, sorry, 2011. This last gift will be a permanent restriction with a CR acceptance. The Emerson Association has relied mainly on family and private funds to support the upkeep and maintenance of the historic house and grounds, carry the cost of visitor programs, and provide the occasional grant to Emerson scholars. They are committed to keeping the house open to the public and maintaining its integrity and authenticity as a historic 18th-century home. In 2017, the Emerson Association approached the town with a proposal to assist with these goals and offered three parcels to the town. The town acquired two parcels in 2019, and those parcels are on the southern side of the Emerson parcel here. So just for a little context, on this graphic here, Lexington Road is to the north. The split onto Cambridge Turnpike is just below that. The Emerson parcel is highlighted. The Emerson House and barn are shown on the parcel. The CR that is being considered this evening is in the hatch. And the green that is immediately below or south of the Emerson parcel that consists of a lot of wetlands around the Mill Brook and around the Police and Fire Station and extending towards Walden Street, was purchased in 2019. It is about six and a half acres. It was acquired for $200,000, and that was the first part of this proposal to assist with the Emerson Association's goals of maintaining its ability to provide the services that it's been providing for over 100 years. This current proposal is to acquire a conservation restriction over that hatched area that consists of 0.68 acres on a portion of land at 18-28 Cambridge Turnpike. This CR preserves and protects in perpetuity the portion of the Emerson Thoreau Amble, which crosses. And you can see that the trail goes through Haywood Street, which is the green on the upper left, crosses that southernmost portion of the Emerson parcel, and then goes down to essentially the cart path that then takes you into the town forest and ultimately goes to Walden Pond. The funding for this is $210,000 from CPA funding, $25,000 from a generous land, Concord Land Conservation Trust gift, and $325,000 from town funds. And I think there was a little, there's some confusion in some of the way that the charts are listed out. There was discussion in the chart, and I'm sorry to no chance to write it down before the meeting, but there's, there was a question about whether some of that funding was to be used for some of the building costs for the preservation of the Emerson House. That is totally private. The Emerson House, any work that they do is all funded privately. The purpose of that $325,000 of town funds has always been for the purchase of this conservation restriction. And that was approved at 2021 town meeting.
Right, so the funds have been appropriated.
Correct, and.
So we're just accepting the.
The CR was granted by the Emerson Association. The NRC has accepted it, and we are seeking the select board's approval of that restriction.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a point, though, that when the funds were appropriated at the FY21 town meeting, it was done very, very quickly because we bundle all of our debt into a huge warrant article, a $6 million article. So the amount of time that was spent on this particular project was about 20 seconds. And that's both at the hearing and at the town meeting. So, and also, I remember being there, and the graphics that were used gave the impression that it was going to be for the building as well. So I just, going forward, I would think we should be a little bit clearer about exactly what we're asking people to spend money for, because this was done very, very quickly, and I think it gave me, sitting in the audience, the wrong impression as far as how the money was going to be spent.
I would say, though, I believe it was when I was on the select board, we got a pretty extensive description, presentation of this proposal.
I watched the public hearing. I actually went back and watched it.
Okay.
And I went back and watched the town meeting, and I would say 20 seconds is generous.
Okay.
Right, I remember on the CPC, we got a long conversation as well. But I also remember that we were very worried about COVID then and condensing a lot of things. So that was an unusual town meeting.
That's true. You know, what it brings up for me, though, is that when we go forward and we're thinking about the town's debt plan, and this is a little bit off topic, I'm sorry, but when we think about the town's debt plan, rather than bundling these things and rushing them through, we might want to step back and have a better discussion so that people really understand what they're voting for and what they're spending their money on.
Do we know how the price was arrived at?
Yes, so the price was arrived at assessing, it was the assessed value of that portion of the land, which is a buildable lot. So there is 120 feet of frontage, and it does have 40,000 square feet of area. So it's considered a buildable lot.
Isn't most of it wet?
Not, not that parcel. The one that the town purchased in 2019 is mostly wet, which is why it was six and a half acres for $200,000, because it was mostly wetland and floodplain. But the parcel that is under consideration for the restriction is mostly upland. There's a small, the southern, you can actually see in.
Where the wetlands at the back. Where the trail is, actually.
Where the trail goes through the wetlands. That's where the boardwalks are, right.
But, and you can imagine what a disaster it'd be to put a.
Better picture.
House on that parcel. It's just a very sensitive site. So are there any other questions from the board relative to the conservation restriction?
Well, yes, I have one question, and that is, has the, the document is a fairly long legal document. Has that been reviewed by town council?
Okay.
I noticed that it restricts, it restricts certain things. Does it also restrict bikes and e-bikes?
It doesn't. So we did have a conversation with the Emerson Association about that, and they chose to be silent on that particular use. The Natural Resources Commission and the Trails Committee are going to be embarking on a discussion about shared use of trails and what uses are appropriate. I would anticipate, just given the fact that this goes through a very muddy section of wetlands, a lot of it is boardwalk, that bikes would not be an appropriate use along this section of Concord, of trail.
Well, don't you have separate regulations for the use of town land and for conservation land that you administer so that you could place any additional restrictions on it that you thought were appropriate?
That's right. So we can't put rules and regulations on land that is not town land. So on a restricted parcel that is still privately owned, that's right, we couldn't. But that's about, I think, if I recall, that's.
It's a very short stretch.
It's 160 feet or, you know, plus or minus that goes from Haywood Meadow.
And it's only accessible from a trail on either direction where you would have rules.
Right, right.
So you can control what goes on it?
Indirectly, yes.
And also, just to note, that this is on the Bay Circuit Trail, which while the Bay Circuit Trail isn't 100% bikable, that I think a lot of the Bay Circuit Trail is intended to be bikable. So, you know, eventually, we probably want to have some signs or something on like Haywood Street telling bikes that they should probably go down Haywood Street and Walden Street versus, you know, try to go through this area, because it's not going to work.
Right.
Okay, so are we ready for a motion for this?
Okay, move to approve a conservation restriction and easement over a 0.68 acre portion of a 3.6 acre parcel of land at 18 and 28 Cambridge Turnpike, shown as CR area on a conservation restriction plan of land prepared by Stamsky and McNary, Inc., dated March 7th, 2022, granted by the Ralph Waldo Emerson Memorial Association on December 21st, 2022, to the Town of Concord, acting by and through its Natural Resources Commission pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Section 31 through 33 of Chapter 184. Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, so now we are ready for our Light Plant Departmental Update.
This goes over Shannon. No, that's important stuff.
Just trying to figure out if we can.
Jump, jump on the Zoom, but don't go on audio. And then, and then you can share.
Okay.
Yeah.
So did you guys have a meeting about reviews?
We're going to. It's on the agenda, yeah.
Right, but you guys didn't, this wasn't.
No, no, we didn't have a meeting, but we've had some texts.
Okay, good.
So just while everybody's getting organized, I'll just mention that several months ago, we started inviting departments to come in to provide updates. We are sort of at the end of this. We have the Light Plant tonight. Finance Department is the next one up that, oh, and now I'm reverberating.
No, he joined the audience. He won't now.
Yeah, so Finance Department is the next up, and we probably will do that in February.
We have IT here?
We could have IT back. We've had.
We've had them.
Was Jason here?
Jason, Jason was here.
Was I here? I don't think I was here.
It was probably combined.
Maybe it's before your time.
Maybe, yeah, okay, sorry. Okay, oh wait.
Yeah, right. I think the board has found these helpful. It's nice to know. It's nice to know what the departments are working on and also to meet some of the, some of the staff in the department. So are you good now?
I think so.
Okay. So this evening, we have Dave Wood, who is the Director of the Light Plant, and Laura Scott, who is the Power and Rate Supply Administrator. Anybody who attends any of the Light Board meetings on a regular basis knows that Laura plays a big part at the light plant and is a great presenter and can make people understand anything she's talking about.
Well, I just received my latest bill today, along with the flyer that was telling me about the new meters and the time of use rates. So very interested to see that moving forward now.
All right. So we're going to start off, Laura's going to start off and kind of review our power supply a little bit, and then we're going to go through some updates. So I'm going to see if I can share.
Yep.
I was just saying.
Oh, well, I think we have a means of getting that sorted out.
So as you're probably aware, you know, power supply is the largest expense for the power plant. We have a projected roughly $38 million budget for 2023, and power supply is, you know, the lion's share of that. So we spend a lot of time focused on power supply, both for reliability, for cost for our customers, and increasingly to achieve non-carbon emitting status, which has been a big project of Dave's, at least since I've come on board in 2016. And I think if you, I know this chart's busy, but I'll try to explain. I think this chart does a good job of showing you where we came from. Over on the left side, we start off with the year 2016 and project out to the year 2030. And the gray bars that you see large pieces of on the left represent that portion of our power supply that was emitting. So basically, dirty power. You can see that, you know, we were at, whatever that number is, 84% in 2016, and we had just a small percentage of renewables made up of the green, which is largely wind and solar that comes with Massachusetts Class 1 renewable energy certificates. We had a little bit of hydro, which comes with main Class 2 certificates. We had no nuclear back in 2016. We have entitlement to some federal power from the New York Hydro Power Association that is a nice source of non-emitting power for us every year. We do buy solar, both from arrays that are situated in town, as well as imports from the grid. But none of the power that we contract for that comes from solar comes with any type of renewable energy certificates. And our board determined quite a while ago that we weren't going to count any power that did not come with certificates that we then retired. And so the shaded bar that's to the right of the stacked bars shows you that, starting in 2018, we started buying non-associated Class 1 REX to accelerate our advancement to a fully non-emitting power supply by 2030, because it's going to be extremely difficult for us to get to 100% by contracting directly for power that comes from non-carbon emitting sources, particularly if we were to cut nuclear out, which is in pink. The New England ISO grid today depends on nuclear power for about 23% of the power generated in the region on a year-round basis. And quite frankly, the grid, you know, wouldn't be able to survive without nuclear, not just because of the total megawatts that it supplies.
It's a baseload.
It's baseload, it's dispatchable, it's conventional, you know it's coming. The wind and the solar, it might, it might not.
Yeah.
And it's very difficult to depend on. So anyway, nuclear has become a larger portion of our portfolio, starting really in 2020 and more so in 2021. That's expected to climb to about 36% in the mid 2020s. And then our major contract for that will expire in 2029, so that by 2030, that portion goes back down again. And our board recently chose to pass on another option we had to buy increased nuclear starting in 2030, because they wanted to have a more robust discussion with the town for nuclear. And I believe at the next board meeting, they are going to plan for some public sessions to discuss that. So where we are right now is that in 2022, although it appears the year is over, from a power supply perspective, the year is not over. And the year won't be over until June 15, 2023, which is when the last trading occurs for those non-associated Class 1 REX. So I'm just giving you an estimate right now, but I believe that combined with the power we purchased directly from units that gave us certificates and don't emit carbon, and the purchase of non-associated Class 1 REX, we will be at about 94% for the end of 2022, non-carbon emitting, which is darn close to our 100% commitment, which is by 2030.
Way ahead. Yeah, way ahead.
And one of the reasons we wanted to accelerate this was, well, the board, I don't want to say we, the board, because it helped promote some other programs that we're trying to incentivize, such as electric vehicles. If people know that the power they're buying to power their car is coming from a non-carbon emitting source, it tends to make them more interested in being able to do that. Likewise, with heat pumps, people, you know, more willing to give up the oil and gas heat if they know that the electricity they're switching to is non-carbon emitting. So accelerating that program has enabled us to make some of the other programs more attractive and more successful, quite frankly.
Well, I mean, we have businesses in town like Plug Power, right, that have, are generating, you know, hydrogen, and they, the idea of green hydrogen, this is the way to achieve it, right? Because it's very heavy user of electrical power. And unless you have a green source, then it's not going to be a green energy that's coming out.
Right.
So they've got electrolyzers that are, you know, operating. So I actually think that this is very key from a, from a business economic vitality perspective for Concord, that we really could aggressively market this position, because it's rare.
Yes, it is.
You know, it's very rare, and I think we could get a significant publicity. Actually, it's interesting to see that based upon the REX that you've got listed here, that we're going to have like 102% non-emitting.
Very astute of you to notice that. That will not, that will not happen, because we, what will, this is really done for you to see, kind of, if, if we were to follow the same procedure. What we did is, we said, look, we want to get to non-carbon emitting, but we want, don't want to break the bank doing it.
Yeah.
We don't want to really put ratepayers at tremendous cost in order to achieve this. And so the Light Board, it's a thing I think is fairly clever, is they, they set the allowance or the, or the amount of money we're willing to spend on the non-carbon emitting at a sort of a fixed amount. And as the value of that non-carbon emitting energy fluctuates annually, as it does, that changes the amount we can buy. You can see back in 2020, do you see how small that bar to the right with the little polka dots in it got?
Yeah.
That's because the renewable energy certificates that year got very expensive. And we had a fixed amount of money to spend, and the more expensive they were, then the fewer units we could buy. The board did, after that time, increase the amount of collections, so that, that was one of the reasons. The price went down a bit, and they increased collections. So we went from 25% to 52% in 2021.
But the, I think that at this stage, it seems like you're close enough that to be able to just assure that you hit 100% non-emitting is such a marketing advantage that if, even if you had to spend a little bit extra to get there, it's probably worth it now to just end up at 98, you know, or 99.
Right.
It's like, well, you know, for another, you know, $2,000, we could have bragging rights. I think, you know, it's worth it, I think. So this is great progress. I mean, if, again, relative to our, our plan, you know, and that this is also in terms of the overall climate action plan, this is kind of step one, is get our power source non-emitting. Now, non-emitting is a slightly different term, you know, for people. And again, the nuclear component is something that's worth further discussion, because it's, it's not emitting when everything works great. And if things don't go well, then it's the exact opposite.
Right.
So, yeah.
Right. So this is great progress, and as I've said before, this graph is also really helpful. I see Matt looking at it. Is it on the website?
Yes.
Okay, great. And I'm really happy to hear that you're going to be having public hearings, or public meetings, I guess, about the nuclear, and that the board is going to hear that whole discussion before moving forward, because this is really good progress, and I think that would be the next step to try to lower the amount of nuclear. So, thank you.
Can I just clarify? When you talk about the public meetings, I know it's on the agenda this week, I believe it is, at 7:30 in the morning. Is that the public hearing that you're talking about?
No. So it'll be a separate meeting, most likely be in the evening. The board's going to discuss that. That's what the roadmap, because there's a couple different meetings they want to have with the public, that's one of them. But it will not be during a regular Light Board meeting. It'll be.
That's good. I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Okay. So this is on the production side. Then there's the consumption side, right, which is the meters and.
Yeah. And Dave's going to talk about some of that.
Oh, Mary, yeah.
If you're done with me.
I have a question about the production side, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, thank you. This is good to see the progress you're making, but I do have to bring up the fact that the solar on municipal land, the warrant article that was passed last year.
Yeah.
And that we were expecting a plan by December, and, and I'm wondering if you could talk to us about that.
Sure. That was going to be part of my, my stuff to talk about.
Okay. I'll wait.
I'll go there first. It was actually the last thing on my list, but we did develop an outline. It's on the website now. It's, it's a pretty long outline, but it's early. It needs work, there's no question. And there's a lot of details underneath that that need to be put in. So we're at like the early stages on that. We're looking for feedback on the draft outline, and, you know, giving that to the board, the Light Board, a little while ago, so.
Oh, can we take an action item to get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Love to see that.
Yeah, we can get that out. So that's where we are with that at this point.
So the timeline on that would be, what is the rough timeline for that?
For finishing it?
Well, actually, for having a final plan?
Yeah. So we need to get some input on the outline that we have.
Right.
And then we'll be able to finalize that.
Okay.
And then start building the stuff underneath it.
Okay. So do we have an estimate of when we would have the, after you get the input, we would have the.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, we need some input. That's the first step.
Right.
So once we get that, I think we'll be able to incorporate the comments and the feedback into it fairly quickly.
Okay.
You know, and then the details underneath the outline are the things that are going to take the most time.
So we, should we look back for this in March?
It's probably reasonable.
Okay.
So is this some, like a five-year plan approximately, or two years, or just a wild guess?
That's a big question.
Okay.
There's a lot of pieces to it, in terms of adding all that extra solar, there's land, we've started identifying lands, you know, and how much we could get out there. That was all part of the early process of reviewing this, including the town land. We also reached out to some private property owners, because there's just not enough town land to do what is being asked. So we did reach out to the hospital and start those conversations with them, thinking, you know, a canopy on the parking lot might be feasible, and that sort of thing.
But when you think about this and you're writing your outline, are you thinking of a timeline of about how many years?
Oh, to roll out the whole thing?
Yep.
I think we have to get the, all the details done before I can really answer that. You know, it's an expensive process. We have to look at finances, all those pieces. So I don't have an answer for that yet.
You know, there are multiple impediments to achieving what's been outlined as the goal. You know, some impediments are just land. You know, we've been looking at land, well, what if we could use the land by the house? Oh, no, no, don't touch that. That's got, everyone else has their, you know, eyes on that for something else. Can't use this one, can't use that one. So, and there may not just be enough land. We don't know the answer to that yet, but we're suspecting that there may not be enough, which is why we think we'll probably have to reach out to private property owners. If you solve that piece, and you do manage to find enough land to create the megawatts desired, there's still the technology and engineering that, right now, we can't bring that much solar onto the system. The system is not engineered or designed to handle that. It can't, it can't do it. So there are things we'd have to change about the system. And those are the types of things Dave's talking about, putting in the outline, like, okay, if we were to find that much land to put it on, how would we incorporate it into the system? What would we have to do to be able to bring that much on? And there's, it's quite involved.
So it seems like you've got a good understanding of the questions, right? Would it be helpful if you were to hire consultants or something to actually answer these and get us a plan? Because that's what the town was asking for.
Yeah, that's some, that is a consideration. We, we talked about it at the board level with the Light Board, and I'm sure it's going to get revisited, but that would help, because staff time is pretty chewed up on various things. But we have met with Eversource to talk about the back feeding, and we've talked with Energy New England about how to become a settlement-only generator. So we, we've done a little bit in the background on that stuff, but there's still a lot to do.
Well, I imagine that storage is another consideration.
Well, that's one of the possible solutions, to be able to bring this stuff into the system technologically.
Yeah. But it's, it's something, because I think, you know, you hear in the, in the media that, oh, well, at this point, solar is competitive, you know, as a power source, that new projects, it should be even the lowest-cost source. And yet, you know, when I see the, the investment required, you know, or proposed, it's pretty eye-popping, and you think, well, does that square up with what the market is seeing elsewhere? You know, and why is it not as competitive for us as for others?
Well, land is not as dear to some people as it is to those in Concord.
True, but I mean, we have parking lots, we have rooftops, we have, you know.
Does the land need to be in Concord?
Well, that's what the warrant article says.
The whole idea is that, basically, if you put something behind the substation, ours, it's our power, it's truly ours, whereas outside, you have to pay somebody, you know, to transmit it at the minimum. But.
But the land is that much cheaper.
Potentially. We've got free sites pending.
I believe the intent, though, of the article was to have it on.
Yeah. Town, because basically, the, there is an advantage to having it, to actually having it. But there are all kinds of complications, but, okay. So, keep going.
Okay. So you may have heard, we received a grant from the state for a fast electric vehicle charger. So it's up to $100,000 for two fast chargers. We're pretty excited about that, because they're expensive, and this is going to help offset the cost. We received the first one a couple weeks ago, so it's in the office. And the second unit is scheduled to be shipped in March. So I normally say after the thaw, but we don't have a thaw right now. You know, we're going to start the construction on the distribution system to feed these. Both of these are going to be located at the Rideout Playground parking lot. One of the things that's a requirement in the grant itself is we have to make sure that the spots are handicap accessible as well, so we have to do a little design work on that. But that's going to be moving forward in the early part of quarter two of '23, so I'm very excited about that.
And why, why was Rideout selected as the location for this?
It's, it's pretty close to Route 2, it's walking distance to West Concord, and it was a fairly easy location for us to get power to. So cost-effectiveness was part of the.
There is a charger there now.
Right.
And I, there, I would say that while there are, you know, sporting events there, that the parking lots can get very packed, most of the time, there are spots available. So it's, I think, good that way, because there's less congestion in the parking lot than most municipal parking lots.
Yeah, and we looked at a bunch of other locations, and they were just really difficult to get the power to. So this actually turned out to be a good location for us.
Now, I also heard about a charger at the, is it the police station? It's a four-bay one or something?
They're talking about a fast charger as well.
But I, I heard the budget for that, like 150 grand, and it's like. But I, I heard the budget for that, like 150 grand, and it struck me as like, wow, okay, I, you know, I buy a charger, I get a free car, or what, you know, what do I do? I mean, it's like, the chargers are so expensive.
The level threes are expensive, and that's why I've said over the years, you know, we want to do one, but not until we get grant funding, because it makes it cost-effective.
Yeah.
And so when the grant came out, we went forward, and it was good. So we're excited, and that should be on, like I said, hopefully by summertime. But good stuff for that. We recently just completed our tree trimming specs. We hadn't reviewed them in a few years, so we redid all those, and we're preparing to put out a bid and trim about a quarter of the town this year. So maybe the northwest quadrant first, and the tree trimming cycle will be every, you know, a quarter a year. So it just rotates. So that's a little bit of a change. We used to do a third of the year at a time, and then take the fourth year off. But we spoke with some tree companies, and they're recommending we go in this direction, because 80% of your growth is in the first two years. So it makes a little, a little more sense, and it's gonna help us manage the cost, because the prices have gone up significantly for the labor.
Well, and the tree trimming is crucial to keeping reliability and costs for repairs down.
Certainly, yep. Doesn't help when the trees come down, but it helps with, you know, branches coming on and things like that. So it's a regular part of our process, and like I said, we're just doing a little modification, and the specs have been updated, so we're gonna be going out for that soon.
So what you're saying is they're gonna do one-fourth of the town each year, and so over a four-year cycle, they cover the whole town?
Yeah.
And when was the last cycle that they did?
So it's a little bit of, we've gone out to bed, I think, three years ago. But we also done a lot of trimming internally with our own staff. So it depends on our project base.
Okay.
And so sometimes we'll fill in with staff, but it's time for us to go out, because there's that much that needs to be done. We mentioned the smart meter project earlier. We executed the contract with Eaton, who is the meter provider. We, the lead times on the equipment varies, depending on what you're getting, which, you know, you hear it around the world, everything varies. Some of it's really long, some not so much. The networking equipment that comes with the project is scheduled to come in in February, which is great. That's our first step. You build a network, that's the backbone. The first set of residential meters are scheduled to come in in April of 23. So timing-wise, that's great. They're gonna be shipped in, you know, 2020, which also helps us in terms of managing the inventory. And then the kicker is, from an operation standpoint, it's okay. But from, you know, just getting the project 100% done, the commercial meters are over 60 weeks in lead time. So we'll go through the residential piece, and then when we're done that, the commercial ones will start showing up, and then we'll go after that. So definitely making progress, but like I said, the lead times vary significantly.
Now, has the board concluded their rate setting to fit with the meters?
No, so the board's gonna be talking rates at the second January meeting. And, you know, I met with the chair on Friday, and so they're gonna start focusing on the rates at the special meetings going forward.
Yeah, because times are wasted now. Start putting those meters in.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's one of the things that, you know, Lauren and I have talked about. You know, we're talking about a type of use rate, but we have to have the rate established. There's some other factors that need to be considered. And it's gonna take some time. The board's gonna have to really spend some time on it, and they are.
It's incredibly complex.
It is.
So are you saying that most residents are, should expect installation of these new meters during 2023?
I would say the residential will be 2023 and into 2024.
Okay.
So, and we haven't established the deployment areas yet.
Okay.
So once the network goes up, you kind of build your way out from the network. And so that's, that's what we're gonna be doing.
Okay.
Well, the rates that are set for the smart meters encourage the use of electricity? Because what I'm hearing is that people feel right now, that, some people feel that the rates now discourage the use of EVs, discourage the use of heat pumps. So is that, is that gonna be corrected with the combination of a new rate structure and the smart meters?
Yeah, we, we are recommending strongly to the board that we eliminate the tiered rate system, which is what you're referring to today.
Right.
Where the more electricity you use, the more kilowatt-hours you use per month, the higher the per-kilowatt-hour rate you pay. So the first bit is at a low rate, then the next bit is at a higher rate, then everything over a certain amount is at the highest rate. And people feel like that's punitive, that somehow they're paying the highest rate.
Right.
Even though, if you compare it against, you know, oil or gas that they're substituting, it could still be more cost-effective.
Right.
But they don't, it doesn't feel that way to them.
Yeah.
So, you know, assuming that they do approve the move to eliminate the tiers and move to a time-of-use rate, then it would eliminate that problem altogether.
Okay.
Now, there may be some other changes that come along with that. The board may choose to eliminate some special rates we have right now for heat pumps that were put in place to correct the tier problem. But we're trying to simplify, you know, to the extent reasonable and possible, while still promoting the behaviors and the uses that we want to. And we think time-of-use will be a good way to do that.
So the other question with these time-of-use rates is, you know, would we end up with a Texas-style system, perhaps, that, you know, on July 22nd, when it's 103 degrees at 4:00 in the afternoon, for that hour, you're gonna spend $200, you know, on electricity for that one hour?
So...
Or $600, you know, because the spot price just goes like this, right? Oh, and it, and it might be fair, you know, but I know that people have been shocked
Yeah.
by those in Texas.
There'll be, still be a significant amount of dollar-cost averaging for customers. We're not going to real-time pricing.
Okay.
At the same time, we go to a time... Yeah, like whatever it is, $5,000, you're gonna pay it. No. You know, we'll still...
Night is free, essentially.
We'll still be, you know, putting all the hours together, right? And spreading that out, so nobody here sees that kind of rate shock. But the idea would be to try to encourage people to use electricity during the times of day, when there's not a big amount on the grid. And to encourage that, we'll make it a lower price.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. I just didn't know how sensitive you were gonna be.
Right, and also people with heat pumps, like we switched in our winter bill is, is the one that's really high now, not the summer bill. So then...
Will there still be consideration for the low-income?
Yeah, I don't believe there'll be any change to that rate.
I assume that the higher, the higher rates for greater consumption are based on the fact that our marginal cost increases as we reach the capacity of our system? So that, so, don't, don't we, I mean, isn't part of what we're told, like in the summer, is that when we go over a certain capacity, the electricity that we're buying from outside is much more costly to the town?
That what, what we hope we're telling you in the summer is that the large, that the quantity that the town is using during the one hour of the year that the grid operator determines is the highest hour, that sets the capacity price. So the more we're using during that hour, the higher our cost will be.
Okay, so that's what, that's the basis for charging higher rates for...
No, in fact, in general, our marginal cost decreases as price, as the kilowatt-hours go up, because we have some costs that are fixed in nature. The more kilowatt-hours you use, the reason the higher price was put in, I believe, was solely for conservation. People felt like it was gonna cause people to conserve. I've read a lot of articles, not a lot, I've read some articles about this, about whether that really works or not, and I think the jury is kind of out. I don't think there's really any, any studies I've seen that have conclusively proven that that works.
And it's the amount, though, per meter, so that if you have a large, like if you have a commercial use, which uses a lot of electricity, but does that mean that they are paying a higher rate?
Well, commercial customers pay a different rate than residential customers do to begin with.
Yeah.
And then depending on how big a commercial customer you are, we have small, medium, and large. The small ones are a lot like residences. They just pay per kilowatt-hour. But the medium and large guys not only pay per kilowatt-hour, but they have what we call a demand fee, which charges them for that high hour that they're using, as well as the total volume for the month.
Okay.
So the Concord Middle School Solar and Storage Project, we've been working on that with Solar Design Associates. That's for a roof canopy array with a storage device. We have 60% construction drawings done with Solar Design Associates. They're on our website, if you're interested in looking at them. Probably, we need to look at the first couple of pages. The rest are all...
What is the projected cost per kilowatt-hour of that installation?
Well, it depends what you want to call the installation. Does that include the battery? Does that not include the battery?
Well, that's a, I guess, give it to me both ways.
Yeah, how do, how you want to amortize it over? What do you want to use for a discount rate?
We haven't...
I guess my concern is, is it competitive?
Whenever you put a small battery in, it's going to cost you more per kilowatt-hour than a large battery.
Even net, after you, because you definitely get benefits right out of leveling out the power, right?
Yeah, but you would get that if you put the, a larger battery somewhere else.
Uh huh, right.
And it would be more cost-effective.
Well, and so there's the question of, does the battery need to be on-site?
I don't know enough about the system to know the answer to that.
We have spots in town that we could use batteries in other locations, for sure.
Yeah.
There's saturation issues. Battery on-site would be important, because we would then, if we didn't have a battery on that array, we would then create saturation on the second transformer, which is what we're trying to do.
I see. So you need it just to deal with the network issue?
Right.
Okay, all right, thanks.
We have, on our website, a number of different EV programs. We have four. We have over 600 cars, EV cars in town now, which is pretty impressive. So they're getting adopted quite heavily.
I hear Belmont's ahead of us, though.
Who's telling you that? Who's telling you that?
Belmont is.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Well, we gotta catch up and beat them, you know?
So we have a drive EV program. That's a rebate of up to $1,000 for someone that purchases or leases a new or pre-owned EV. So that's been well-received by many. We have the EV Level 2 program, home charging rebate. That, that's for a Level 2 charger that a lot of people have in their house. We have the EV miles program, which is an off-peak charging incentive. And that's something we really want people to take advantage of, because, you know, charging on peak is really costly, so that's been utilized. And then we just recently launched a commercial EV charging station rebate program. So that's new, and that's on the website as well. We also, on the heat pump program, this is kind of impressive, as far as I'm concerned. We have 365 heat pump customers in Concord.
How many?
365.
And that's the ones that we know of, right? And it goes back a number of years, but last year, in 2021, we had 71 new additions. Last year, we were promoting the program pretty heavily, and we got 186 new additions last year alone.
Yeah, I, I see them come through when I do the town warrants each week. And, yeah, there, there are several every week.
Yeah, so...
It's impressive, yeah.
Yeah, they just keep coming. So we're doing the right thing. It is costing a lot of money, but we're incentivizing it.
Yeah, but you're gonna end up with customers for life.
Yeah. Our residential solar has continued to grow. We still have our rebate program. I looked earlier today. We have 445 residential solar customers. And that's about four megawatts of production, so it's, it's...
Four megawatts of capacity.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Unfortunately, we'll get four megawatts.
Um, the only, the only other thing that I was gonna mention is we use substation maintenance every three years. It's part of our routine maintenance to make sure the stations are functioning properly. This year is one of those years where we'll be doing maintenance. And that'll include all the relays, testing, and all that sort of thing. But it really helps keep the system and the stations in good condition, because our testing companies will find things and will, you know, replace parts and whatnot, what need be. But that is scheduled for this year, and I think...
Hey, actually, getting back to the, the programs for like EVs and heat pumps and so on, I just wanted to say that we recently got an induction range. And I, first of all, want to give a huge plug for induction. It's fantastic. Also, it's having its moment right now. There's all these health studies that are talking about natural gas and the concerns with that in the home. And then, secondly, you know, just there's a much wider availability and better cost structure than there used to be of induction ranges. And I, on the other hand, I don't see that CMLP offers any incentive program around that. MassSave does, though I was told when I applied by MassSave that because of my ZIP code, I was ineligible.
Yeah, that's a problem.
And that seems like a gap, right?
It is, and you know, so a lot of the state programs, we've started mirroring. Like heat pumps is one. We're funding it through our rates ourselves. But we're mirroring it, because we're hearing things just like you just brought up, like, you know, qualify. So that's a good suggestion. We can take a look at that. We do have other rebate programs. I didn't highlight them, because I just wanted to go to the higher ones on our website.
Sure. I just wanted to highlight that one, just because it's a near-deer.
That's, that's my update.
Okay, questions? Because we will open it up for some public input and comment as well. All right, anybody who wants to speak? I see the chair of the light board here. So if you could come up and speak into the microphone and identify yourself.
Hi, Brian Folds, 33, Riverdale. Yeah, Chair of the Light Board. I just wanted to mention about the tiered rates. Because I, I'm sorry, I apologize. I thought it started at 7:40.
Well, we're way ahead of schedule.
You're ahead of schedule, so, so the...
Like the light plant is on the non-emitting, yeah.
Yes, that's right.
So with the, with the tiered rates, that was something that came out of 2009 Light Board, which wanted to do an environmental action to reduce the carbon footprint of the town. At the time, the light plant was about 97% emitting resources in its portfolio. Today, that's reversed. We're 95% or 98% non-emitting resources. So we want people to consume more electricity and less of the transportable fuels.
Right.
And, and as described here, we're, we're working hard to create the right financial incentives to get people to make these changes. And we're trying to align and reorient ourselves from a reduce-conservation mentality to a promote-and-expand-usage mentality in our structure.
Instead of that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on up. Identify yourself, make a comment.
Hi, Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace. I'm here for two reasons this evening. One is to hear the update on, on the light board, light plant, and also because you're gonna be talking about this year's warrant. The status this evening on Article 38 is really not much. No, no timeline, a published outline over the course of nearly a year, and no new installations. We've been, since 2017, no new installations of municipal solar in the community. And so you'll see an article that you're gonna try to put on the agenda for the warrant that was promoted by me, and I got the signatures collected for, which takes that plan and moves it to a task force that would be seated by you folks. So I'm just trying to move that plan along, because we're nearly a year in, and we really don't have much so far. So that's my, that's my comment, and I look forward to the next part of the agenda when you're working with the warrant. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay, on Zoom, Pamela Dritt, could you make your comment?
Hi, Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green. I applaud the great progress we're making, but I think we're not distinguishing between the amount of electricity used and our desire to con... the amount of electricity used and our desire to conserve, to, to, to conserve electricity and our need to switch from fossil fuel. I do not think we should give any financial incentives for regular electric customers unless they are all-electric or using heat pumps or using the, the, the storage systems that we promoted in the past. I think for regular customers, the tiered rate should remain in place and it should be removed immediately for all-electric customers and those who are using solar and electric vehicles. We need to incentivize people not to just to conserve electricity or, or, or to use electricity. We need to incentivize people to switch from fossil fuels. And the only way to make them, incentivize them to switch from fossil fuels is to make their electricity more expensive when they're using fossil fuels.
Thank you. Actually, I did remind me of another point, which is about in-home storage systems, you know, that are available, like the Tesla Powerwall, for example. So with this time of use rate, I just imagine that there might be an economic incentive for customers to do that and that to some degree that that could offset the, the need to develop municipal storage systems. And especially if we built the right incentives in, we might have the capitalization of that program underwritten by residents.
Exactly. And therefore, we need to have, yes, exact, so we need to have incentives for residential battery installation as well as incentives for.
Right.
And we need also to make it so that those people who have solar, whether or not they have battery, are not punished financially for that by paying more for the electricity when they need the electricity.
Okay. Thank you very much. So again, you anticipate that to be part of the program of some sort.
Well, on that point.
Yeah. It almost would probably matter which part of town you're in. Like you'd want to say, if you're in this part of town, we want you to buy, you know, we'll give you a break on your solar, your storage system.
Yeah, your first point about it will, it will help monetize battery installations for private parties for sure. Because it will help them lower their bills and therefore pay back the cost of the battery.
Right.
But in terms of that one-for-one reducing CMLP's need for dispatchable battery, not so much because, and Brian can probably have comments on this, but you know, I haven't found any systems out there that can reliably harness the distributed batteries to collectively act at our push of the button.
Uh huh.
We can't count on customers to have the batteries empty during the sunniest part of the day so that we can fill them up.
No, but I would imagine just if the economic incentives are correct, that it would tend towards the right direction, right?
It would tend, but we need more.
So Brian, if you wanted to.
Yeah, we need more power than that.
So since you're the chair, I will give you the.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So the light plant is taking on a lot. The AMS system, the metering system, the smart meters being deployed, that is the focus currently. There is a virtual power plant review or write-up done as for Town Resilience. This is the concept of distributing batteries around to town facilities and critical infrastructure and having software to use them as if they were a single large-scale battery.
Yeah.
If that was in place, it could be expanded to residents, but there's a lot of ifs there. A lot of, you need to gain some experience in operating the software to see if we can give it to residents. The state has a program called Connected Solutions, which does exactly that. It aggregates all these small batteries in homes for grid management. But again, I think the focus right now is getting the smart meters in place and getting, kind of reducing the number of things that the light plant is working on and getting those set up. And then we can focus on storage. But yes, a time of use structure would give some financial incentive towards batteries. I don't think it would make them cost-effective, but as an alternative to, say, a gas generator, it may find a lot of value there.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks for the update and we'll really look forward to all these new changes that are coming.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
And certainly come back anytime you want to hear from us.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So next item on our agenda is the annual town meeting warrant articles and just reviewing the order of those articles as we go through. So I see our town moderator approaching the table. So I see we have 46 articles. I, it's funny because I had in the run-up to this thought, oh, this is going to be a really light town meeting. I mean, there's really, you know, hardly anything that we're going to have to talk about this year. And then when I saw the listing, I thought, oh, no, this is a, you're, you know, your regular town meeting.
It's smaller than usual. A little bit smaller than usual.
Well, but it's.
We've had 60 in years past.
Yes, but there are four citizen petitions. There are a few articles that I know I've already seen public comments and conversation about, and so there will be a certain amount of debate. So I think that we have, you know, a real meeting ahead of us.
I think we do.
So our job tonight is to determine an order of the articles. I don't know if there's anything else that is sort of at our discretion, but that's, that's what there, what's there.
Well, I, I would say that warrants are, articles are included in the warrant at the pleasure of the Select Board for the most part. There are a few situations. For example, the Community Preservation Committee has a statutory right to put things on there.
The Personnel Board, I think. Can't they put their classification?
They might. I had been under the impression that the Planning Board had the right to, and in fact, they do not.
Oh, really?
So it, it is, these are all of the articles that have been submitted for inclusion on the warrant, and it is up to the Select Board to order them, however it sees fit. And in the past, for the most part, the Select Board has acquiesced in what has been submitted, although on occasion, there has been a submission by a committee that wasn't discussed with the board before it showed up. And the Select Board has said, no, not this year. So it is obviously in the board's discretion whether there's anything, any article on this list that falls into that category. And otherwise, the issue before you tonight and the one that's on the agenda is just putting them in the proper order so that they can get published in the warrant.
Okay. And Shannon, could you possibly enable me to share screen? So I've taken a first crack at that and I just thought it might speed up the discussion if we walk through that. So can people see that? I tried to make it. Yeah, it's still, okay, how about this? Why don't I make it, yeah, bigger?
Just a little bit bigger.
Oh, is that, I don't know if we can turn that on. I'm trying to see if I can.
There is another screen over there. Not very helpful.
Okay.
That's a little, oh, that's better.
Okay. So I don't know if that helps?
It does.
Okay. All right. So, you know, the first few articles choosing the town officers here and reports and so forth, all the way through the board's classification actions, the Personnel Board's classification actions leave in place. But then what I've suggested is there is a citizen petition urging the town to move forward with having a DEI director position. And it struck me, first of all, that that is a personnel-related article and that, secondly, we have had a principle that we've used recently to kind of break up the petition articles so that they are not all clustered together in the agenda. So I was suggesting pulling this forward quite a bit, then taking it up at that point after we discuss the Classification and Compensation Plan for regular status positions. Any comments about that? Does that?
I see it fitting in more with the budget and whether the town manager is going to recommend this.
Before 10.
So put it.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I might, this is not actually an appropriation article. It is a, it is an article that is urging.
Eventually, if we were to move forward, there would need to be incremental spending in theory.
Right. But it, in and of itself, it is not an appropriation article.
And then the other thing, I think the point that was well made was that it either would be or wouldn't be in the town manager's proposed budget at the position.
Right. That's why, that's why I'm thinking maybe it should be number 10.
So even though it's not directly an appropriation article, it would be reflected or not in the budget. So I, I like that idea of potentially taking this and putting it after town budget so they go down there. Everybody okay?
I want to see what Carrie thinks.
Well, you know, it's not in the budget.
Right.
We, we talked about this when the DEI Commission was in. What is in the budget is a significantly increased amount of funding for DEI initiatives that might include hiring a consultant, doing some training, doing any number of projects. But it's not in the budget. It's not going to be included in the budget, unfortunately, because the budget is in compliance with the, with the Finance Committee's guideline.
Right.
And this request to have a, and I understand it's coming through a petition, but the, the Commission did talk to you about it.
Yes.
Came, came well after the, the budget was put together.
Right. Well, and I think also, we usually put new positions in place as a regard, as, in response to a plan. And we are actually on the path to create a plan.
Creating a plan, yes.
And so it's, we are moving slower than many would like us to, to go. It's just that this is the, the normal sort of pace at which we do new initiatives, like we arrived at having a sustainability director position, for example. Okay. Still, in terms of, it's a petition article. It will be on the agenda. And so I think that's probably the most appropriate place for it to go. So then we move forward. So just, you know, we've got the free cash, the town budget, the capital articles, OPEB. And then we move to the, and then we have the opioid fund and then, which already has money that's coming, right? That is really establishing a vehicle for that money to be held. And then we start getting into the school budget. So one question is whether Minuteman Tech should be first, and I recommend that it be first. First of all, because the Minuteman Tech personnel are from other towns typically, you know, I mean, they're coming into Concord to make their presentation and that.
They, they also, Mr. Chair, may need to be in multiple town meetings on the same evening.
Yeah, so to more, so what I was thinking, to the extent that we can give them a, maybe not a time certain, but a, a good sense of when they're going to be in front of the town, I, I think it's worth putting them first.
Good.
Okay. And then we get into this public school budget, capital school projects. And then there's this article that was initially misnamed in our list, which was initially in our list named as the regional high school capital. But in fact, instead, it's a capital article for paying for the middle school playing fields if they are cut from the project through the alt-deduct process during the bidding. So that's what this article is. And I, I don't think people were aware. And again, I have not read the article. I don't, I don't know exactly what it says, but I believe it's a $1.8 million.
That's where it belongs.
Is being suggested.
I think that's the right place in the order.
Okay. So then we go to the middle school stabilization fund, then the regional high school budget. Then we get into the 250th Celebration Appropriation that I put, that, well, that is already here right before the CPC. And then you see the CPC appropriations. What I suggested there was to take the Affordable Housing Trust, this Keith Bergman made a request today, that we put the two affordable housing items together. And in order to do that, what I needed to do was to move the CPC appropriations for affordable housing to the end after the resend and reappropriate. The other alternative would be to put it before, but to discuss this before the general recommendations didn't make sense to me.
That's, that's good.
So this goes like that. Then we go down to the playing field road easement to two square feet, I think it is. And then the demolition review bylaw, which isn't technically a zoning bylaw, but is, you know, a bylaw, a town bylaw that would really affect buildings. So I think it, making it adjacent to the zoning bylaws is good. But for some reason, the mobile food establishment, the so-called food trucks bylaw, was put after the combined business residence and not next to the fast food.
Right.
So I moved that up one, so it would be there. So we have two food-related items together. Then we get into the citizen petition for the noise bylaw and the leaf blowers, which these are two related items. Then I pulled these three energy-related articles together. So specialized stretch energy code, the solar expansion for the middle school, and the citizen petition for the solar generation task force.
I'm wondering if the, the solar expansion for the middle school should be up with the, the middle school capital in the, in the school budget, in that, in that grouping.
Let's see what that does. Well, that is a different way to go at it. All, they would have all these middle school related things together.
Right.
Versus, the other though is that, you know, this is solar. See, the, the thing I would think would be weird is we certainly couldn't put the solar generation task force in the middle of the school articles, right?
No, no.
And yet, this solar expansion of the middle school versus the solar generation task force, aren't they kind of related?
No, I think the solar plant is a, is a real plan to spend up to $13 million.
Yeah.
To build a, a solar power plant for the school. So it's related to the school and it has a real appropriation associated with it. The other one is simply recommending that, not simply, but it's recommending the formation of a task force. There's no appropriation associated with it.
May I, may I suggest, Mr. Chairman, that I'm not sure what staff you need present for that article and if it is in fact, light plant staff, they're, they're going to be there a different night and you would need to have them two different nights if.
Yeah, well, that's, what do you think? I mean, I think that's pretty compelling.
Is the, does the CMLP enterprise fund go on the consent calendar ever?
You know, usually, but I don't know until after the hearings happen what's going on the consent calendar. Maybe we'll have, you know, I heard this evening, some discussion that may be of some interest to people on, for example, how much nuclear there is in the portfolio and so forth. And that could lead us to a place where we always pull at least one of those enterprise articles off the consent calendar so that the community gets an opportunity to hear about them and, and discuss them. And I don't know whether it'll be the light plant this year.
I still feel it belongs with middle school, more in middle school funding.
Any other opinions on this one?
Well, I think the solar generation task force might need some, the, the light plant staff might want to be there for, for that. I don't know. Can, can you go back up to the school for a minute? I have an idea that might work. Okay. So one crazy thing we could do is do the Minuteman School. Okay, so one crazy thing we could do is do the Minuteman School, then do the high school, then do the public schools and immediately.
Oh, flip it all around.
And as soon as we finish the public schools, do all the light plant stuff.
Before the CPC.
Right.
That's an interesting approach. I like it. So, so let's see. And I think that right now, we just drop them all between 18 and 22, right?
Right. Yeah, that would be.
Now, we would still leave aside the, the enterprise fund, right? Keep all the enterprise funds together, or do you want to take?
Well, I wanted to take the BD center out of the enterprise funds and bring it sooner in the, in the town meeting.
Well, let's, let's try this. We'll cut that. So it goes right here. So we have.
So you might want to flip.
Oh, and then put the light, yeah, this first.
Put that one first.
Yeah, got it. Actually, what we probably want to do is also make this one after that. Okay.
Okay.
Everybody cool with that?
That, that, this arrangement does mean that if the light plant doesn't end up on the consent calendar, that's, their, their staff will have to be there two different times.
Well, if you want, we could, I'm, I'm okay with putting the enterprise fund up there.
Yeah.
For, for the light. I mean, it's, it's not that.
Sure.
Sure, there's no, I don't think there's any big deal.
They don't, they don't need to be together. They're all different staff.
That's right. They're totally different kinds of spending.
It's been a long time since there's been a presentation on the, the light plant budget.
All right, I like it. We are, we are cooking here. Okay. All right. So now we are back to demolition review bylaw, the zoning bylaws. Now we're getting the noise, we're past that. Now we're into the enterprise funds. So solid waste, sewer, sewer improvement, water system, PEG access, BD.
Yeah, but the BD center, if you remember last year, poor Anna, we asked to take that off the consent calendar, and it is one of our goals this year, to take a closer look at the BD. And last year, Anna presented that when everybody was exhausted. So I would like to move that up to give it a.
Where?
I don't know.
Well, I think that's a good idea. And I also think that what we usually try to do is put something exciting at the end so that people don't just leave. So you have.
Didn't work last year.
No, but, um, you know, I don't know which of these things might get a lot of.
How about the food truck at the end?
Yeah, something like that, food truck.
I'd say you could put it, you could put it around the 250th somewhere, like before the 250th, or you could put it before the demolition review.
How about there? That's fine.
Before the demolition.
Either way is fine with me.
Okay.
Great.
We are really messing with this.
Yep.
Okay. All right. And now we get down, I just put parking meters and the revolving funds at the end. I, I don't know. I mean, they could, now I think they could go back up in front of these, but I don't think it really matters that much.
Doesn't matter, that, those are exciting.
They're going to be. Those are going to be on the consent calendar. Yeah, they're going to be on the consent calendar. All right. I think we have.
Well, I'm interested what Carmen thinks.
Oh, I think the order that you have, have set is, is fine. It's a little different than usual, and there's nothing wrong with that. I did want to make a couple of other comments, though, and this is on hearings. I noticed that the draft, the draft table contents usually includes which board the hearing on the article will be before.
Right, and let's go over to that.
And I, I did note that the demolition review general bylaw is slated in the draft to be before the planning board. It's not actually a planning board article. The planning board has no enforcement responsibility there. It's not a zoning bylaw. And in 2014, when we took up the demolition delay bylaw at annual town meeting, the hearing was before the select board.
Yeah, so we should take that.
Okay.
All right. And then there was the other one, DEI, the director, whether we should put that in FinCom because there's a budgetary impact. Yeah, great, it's just a recommendation, but nonetheless, right? So I'd, I'd suggest that.
Yeah, I like that idea.
All right, so with those two swaps.
And I just have the preservation articles.
Yeah.
Remind me again, what is the rescind and reappropriate one versus?
That's where the, it was the, you know, where Christopher Heights.
Right.
Or no, it's not Christopher Heights.
It's not, because we're dealing with that special town meeting.
It's probably other projects that didn't go forward.
No, it's the other part of Christopher Heights, right?
Which one are you questioning?
No.
No.
No, because I think in special town meeting, we're doing the one about the CPC taking the money back.
Oh, right, okay. Okay, so what is this one then?
So is it 26?
We're putting money into the reserve.
Item 26.
The housing reserve.
Oh, at special town meeting.
That's special town meeting. This is different.
Oh, no, this is part two of the same thing.
Right, so special town meeting will rescind those prior appropriations and appropriate those funds to the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund within CPC. And now they're going to rescind that appropriation and send it over to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah, but that's, that's number 25 is the, go to the affordable.
Yeah, yeah, this is.
By the way, it says Housing Affordable Trust, by the way. I think we should flip it.
Yeah, I think there's.
Yeah, there's a typo there.
Are you sure we have 25 and 26 and a special town meeting article?
I'd love to be able to see number 26.
I'm guessing that, yeah, I don't have the text in front of me, but I'm guessing that the 26 is for the open space part of Junction Village. There were $250,000.
Yeah, all right.
I thought it was 25.
No.
No, it was 250.
It was 250. That the town appropriated. And that, that is now being rescinded and then appropriated back to the Community Preservation Fund.
Okay.
Rather than.
For open space.
Okay, open space.
It makes perfect sense.
All right, so given that, is this the right order then that we want?
I think so. Oh, Diane, Diane, I'd love to recognize you on Zoom. Go ahead and speak.
We've mailed this one perfectly. The 24 is exactly what was just described and 20, 20, wait, the regular is the 24, then 25 is exactly that. It's the taking the special town meeting funds and, and giving them to the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that's how it should read, of course. Then the Community Preservation Committee, this is the $250,000 that was set aside for the refurbishment of the, the grounds around the, the Junction Village. But we didn't have to do that now because Junction Village is no longer going forward. And so we're recovering that money. It's always going, it's there to be used in some productive way in the future.
Okay.
So that was actually an open space appropriation and not an affordable housing.
Right, so that, number 26. So we'll handle that first, and then we'll do the Affordable Housing Trust one.
Right, and so I'm thinking that there's a possibility that 24 should come last if they want to use some of the funding that came out of 26.
Are they?
No, I don't think it is dependent on that.
They've already made their recommendations?
They have, yeah.
Okay.
We're not using that funding money. It's coming.
Thank you.
And then, Tanya, you have your hand up. Is it relative to this point?
Yes, it is. Thank you. Thank you very much, Matt, for, yes, it's about the article that I sponsored, the DEI. I made to, I, I wanted to make two clarifications. One is that it does not specify any salary amount or anything, and it talks about, or deadline, it talks about expediting the hiring. So as such, it's not entirely a financial article, although I can see the, of course, it does involve eventually paying somebody. The other thing I wanted to say is that the reason I submitted this article was in order to help the DEI Commission with their priority. And one argument they made at their previous meeting was that this was partly an equity issue. In other words, they want to have some kind of priority in the eventual budget of the town. As such, I would, in order to, you know, do whatever I am trying to do well, I would ask that you put that article before a budget is voted on, just in case something comes up. But, but I, I, if, if I were arguing it, which I might not be the primary presenter, a commission member might be, but, but what, the reason I submitted it was because I heard it as an equity issue. So it's, 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 there is a lot about this, which involves the concept of equity and, and priorities and appropriateness, a lot more than it concerns how much money and by what time.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
I didn't know if anybody wanted to reconsider the order, or are we okay? Okay. I think then we've got an ordering.
That's great. May I, may I just take one moment to mention the COVID arrangements at special town meeting? We will have both the auditorium and the gymnasium open from the outset of the meeting, so we're not waiting for an overflow situation. They'll both be open. The auditorium will be a masks-required area. The gymnasium will be masks optional. There will be extra masks on hand for anyone who's forgotten their mask and wishes to sit in the auditorium. And the town clerk is arranging to have two separate check-in areas, one near the auditorium so that those people who are queuing up can do so with masks, and one closer to the gymnasium. There is childcare also. Childcare does require pre-registration, and that's to make sure we have adequate staffing. The link is on the website to do that. The cost for childcare is $10 for chi, per child. It's a nominal fee with a maximum of $20 per family. If you have multiple children, you'll be bringing.
Thank you. And this is for next, they're gonna say the 19th, the special.
The 19th for the special town meeting.
Thank you.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, and I will send the.
Who knows what'll be going on by the 30th of April.
And I will share the spreadsheet with those present.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, so do we need a motion to approve that order?
Yeah, do we, do we need to have a motion, or are we?
You can do this by consensus.
Okay, that's fine. I think we have consensus. All right. Then we are next moving to, sorry. To our liaison reports, actually.
No, we didn't do the town report.
Annual town report.
Oh, sorry. So you saw in the packet the revised annual town report from the select board. Any comments?
It's awfully long.
It's always long. Yeah, well, one of the nice parts that's long is the acknowledgements of all the gifts that, that we're grateful to receive.
And another nice part was how much we got done last year. We got a lot of things done, but I actually cut out a few sections. The COVID section is shorter, which is good.
Yeah, Mary?
Carrie, I think this is great. I've got just something I'd like to add to this paragraph under select board goals and initiatives, like some mentioned in here of the recreation facilities that we have. We've got a really comprehensive list here, but that's, that's missing.
So what should it say?
You want me to?
Yeah.
These include effective governance, financial, sustainable infrastructure, townwide recreation facilities.
I see.
Okay.
That's all, I just wanted to add that.
We can put in that.
There are also a couple of things in it in terms of tents. I don't know if they got corrected, like talking about something that was going to hap, going to happen before the town, before the town report comes out. And there was something that mentioned our state reps being Tammy Gavey.
Oh, I, I wanted to, well, I did send you a note, Terry Wright, saying that we should note that new representatives have been elected, but they still, as of this date, well, actually not, not as of this date, as of.
By the that date.
Well, it was the 2022, right?
Well, wait a minute.
That it is, you know, the period is for January to December 2022.
Right, but I, my, my draft didn't have, I didn't, I saw your note.
Yeah.
And I put in most of your suggestions, but I didn't put in the names of the new reps. Like, I thought that was probably in a different section of the town report already, like right in the front, and also in the town clerk's report. But Penny, I'm not sure what you're looking at.
Yeah, we had the election, so maybe the clerk would report your one.
Right, exactly.
You might just want to run through it again to take into account the fact that people are going to see it, you know, when some of these things have already happened that you say are going to happen.
Oh, I know, that's always tricky with the town, with, when the year ends in December.
So I too thought this was very good, but I have one minor suggestion, and that is under the section on select board goals and initiatives, scroll down through that list where it says work with the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee. I just added, and the Department of Planning and Land Management.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's good. Yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
And green funds, and green funds.
Well, and, well, or you could say another stakeholders.
That's fine.
Yeah, I almost put that, yeah, okay. So let's put in Shannon, Department of Land, Planning, Land Management, and other stakeholders. Thank you.
And I've got one little net, I think. Did you keep in the part about the implementing diversity, equity, and inclusion in the final?
I, I asked to cut it.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm of two minds because didn't we appoint people to the committee? But that's not.
Okay, fine.
That's what we do for any, any committee.
Yeah, so.
Okay, fine, that's all.
All right.
Got it.
Got it. So, no, I wish, I wish we could keep it, but we didn't have as much as we should. All right. So now I think we are ready for the liaison reports. It's been a real quiet couple of weeks.
I'll go.
Go ahead, Mary. Alice.
I attended the rec commission meeting, and two things to say about that. We did talk about having Kathy Ellis and Anna come in and talk about how the BD Center's doing now that they're done two quarters of the year. So are we still on board to do that?
I think we should, yes.
Great.
Later this month or the beginning of February, depending on how the other items line up.
Great, okay, good. The other thing is that they've got a Jack and Di climber are donating money to have an original piece of art, a painting done that will hang above the, it's an underwater painting that will be done and hang right above the pool as you walk down. It's beautiful.
Wow, great.
So they'll be coming to us later to accept that gift, but it's really quite exceptional. Second thing is the White Pond Task Force had their first kickoff meeting, was a little But we got the group together, you know, we've elected the chairs, the sub-co-chairs, and, and they've got their, work cut out for them. They're doing a lot of research, so hopefully things will smooth out a little bit. We're going to, they're going to be meeting twice monthly, so they're hitting the ground and hopefully it will smooth out. That's all I got.
Okay. Go ahead.
I attended the CPC meeting, and they did, there was some Zoom issues that night, both for CPC and the planning board, and both groups were extremely flexible and managed to at least get the high priorities on their agenda ticked off. The CPC prepared their final warrant articles for the annual town meeting. The planning board was able to take action on two different projects before them with recommendations to ZBA, including the Concord Center for Visual Arts is doing a major construction project there. The Concord Housing Authority met and were actually celebrating, quite frankly, a stellar performance management review that they received from the state, as well as they. review that they received from the state, as well as they asked their Peter Buckley Terrace DHCD audit, because there's so many multiple funding sources involved in that project. There's a separate audit for that. Unfortunately, they have experienced some fraud in terms of some look like laundering of checks that had been put through for substantial amounts of money, and they're in the process of working with the police department and others to, to track that down. They're also already working on, the foundation has gone in on the new Habitat project on Com Ave already, if you've driven by and seen that. And they're also already looking at a potential next project, but it's in the preliminary stages. The Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust met, and again, it was mostly in preparation for, in this case, finalizing the articles that were required for the special town meeting.
Could I just interject that a significant portion of the funds that were taken through fraud have been restored to the housing authority? I think there were, there were two, two main transactions, and the larger one has been reversed, and they have their money back.
From Citizens Bank, but I think there's still some issues regarding.
There definitely is still at least one outstanding, but.
Terms of the investigative process, yeah. Thank you.
Can I have a question? So Linda, has the Concord Housing Development Corp. or the Affordable Housing Trust turning their attention now to bringing in another developer into the Christopher, into Junction Village?
So on the Concord Housing Development Corporation's agenda for Wednesday morning, I think this is an item on their agenda.
Great.
Okay, Terry?
Okay, I have several things. We were running really late last time, so I, I didn't do a report, so I've got several weeks worth. So the Transportation Committee has a new chair, Laura Davis, and two openings on that committee, and they're really starting to make progress now and getting their feet really on the ground and, and working on an RFQ for a comprehensive look at transportation and developing a roadmap for that. And this is something we recommended back a few months ago. Aaron Stevens also got another grant for doing these brick, these soap, these kind of fake brick bump outs at the corner of Main and Walden to make it easier for cars to see pedestrians, because that's been a big issue when they have to come out there. And they're going to talk about the bike racks, which we need more of in Concord Center and West Concord. The Bruce Freeman Rail Trail also has some openings. The Personnel Board did not have enough time to make the warrant deadline to finish the entire new classification study. So as you could see in the draft, we usually have two Personnel Board articles, one to ratify what they've already done, and one going forward to adopt the new classification and compensation. This year, we have two alternate versions of the classification and compensation. Only one of them will be moved, either number five or six, not both. One in case it's finished by then, and one in case it's not. And actually, they met with Carmen, and she said it has to be pretty much finished by the public hearing, so that people really have enough notice. Okay, and they're starting on the revised Personnel Board charge. They're starting to have some really good discussions on that. They're gonna spend several meetings on that and then come to the select board for approval. And after that, they'll be working on the bylaws. So we've got a real active, engaged Personnel Board, which is really exciting. The Act in Concord REC, the consultant estimates we're about 20% along, if you, if you think 100% is when we're totally up and running. And it's gonna pick up the pace quickly in 2023. They are interviewing candidates for the director now in the month of January. And there's one more board someplace, which I can't find right now. Okay, PEG Access. So we now have a timeline with the consultant through August, and the most important event, this is for the franchise agreement renewal that we're working on, a multi-year project. The most important event this year will be the focus groups and the survey that are going to occur in May. And this is helping to determine the needs assessment for the upcoming franchise renewal. And they will come in with the consultant to meet with the select board in February to give an update.
That's good.
Right.
Henry?
I met with the Public Ceremonies Committee last week and introduced the two new members that I had recruited and were not, were appointed by the select board. And so the, there was a good conversation. They were gladly accepted, and there is a real effort there to get things straightened out, including catching up on old minutes and getting, sharing information. And so I think that, and they have gone through the checklist for Patriot's Day, and I've discussed with them the, the importance for making the Patriot's Day parade this year a big splash, and the fact that they have resources for it. And they're working with me to get the participation of the high school band involved once again in that parade. So I'm looking forward with anticipation to that. We also, I also participated in the appointments to the Historic District Commission. There were three appointments that we made tonight, were all people that had been nominated by the various nominating authorities for the Historic District, District Commission. I interviewed each one of those. I spoke for at least an hour with every one of those, those three appointees. And we, I think we established good, a good rapport and good communication, and so that I think we're gonna have a more, a more understanding cooperative relationship with the HTC on some of these controversial issues. And although I anticipated some discomfort about this, I did get thanks from the, some of the, number of the members on the, on the HTC. So I think we're moving in the right direction on that. With the 250th Committee, we are now working on our budget, and we are working through some subcommittees that I've been attending on the communications and the setting up a, an online calendar, an online presence, a website, a connection to the Visit Concord website. And we're working with a consultant on branding and logo. And so it's, it's, it's a kind of a tricky process, but we're, we have a good group of people working on it. So, and we're having our next meeting on Thursday, and we're gonna pull together all the stuff that has been going on during the month that have been kind of dead to meetings because of the holidays.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So I attended the School Committee meeting where there were public hearings for the CPS and Regional School District budgets. They were, they went pretty quickly. There was also the extensive discussion of this Middle School Building Committee warrant article that we just mentioned a little bit earlier tonight. And then there was also the capital plan that was approved. So the other thing was, there was a fantastic video presentation of the high schools' art programs and just the great work that students have done, and everything from video to visual to ceramics to, you name it. Excellent quality work. Then I, because we had a week off, I was able to meet with the, the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee, which was discussing a possible change to their charge. And really, the charge, the nature of the charge that was proposed was to change to something more along the lines of communications, kind of educating the public. And, and also, there was some desire among committee members to expand, because there are all sorts of interconnected issues that lead to Habitat, you know, Habitat being at risk. And so the two threads of discussion that developed from that was, one, would it be more effective for that committee not to be a town board or committee, but rather to be a, you know, a community group? Because then they wouldn't be subject to open meeting law, to minimum quorum requirements, you know, all of those other things that, that we find that town boards and committees do. And really, at this stage, it's no longer in pursuit of a town bylaw or other town business that would normally mean that it would need to be subject to those kinds of restrictions. The second thread was, because the group did feel that being a town board or committee did give them more sway or authority when they did need to talk and gather information or work with businesses and all of that, that could there instead be something more aligned with the, the, sorry, the Resource Commission, the Natural Resources Commission? Because actually, the day-to-day workings of the Natural Resources Commission are more as a regulatory body, but when you look at the charge that was written in 1982, it's quite broad, and it actually would encompass the activities that would, I think, maybe a subcommittee could be called like the Biodiversity Community Committee. It's really about, there's nothing that we have in town that's about encouraging either, you know, habitat or biodiversity in town. We are in a climate crisis that we are addressing in some respects through sustainability efforts, but we're not addressing the natural habitat impacts as a town. And we do have a lot of conservation land and habitat in town.
Farmland.
That, and farmland that does merit that kind of. So that is kind of the, where the discussion ended up that evening, and I think it's worth talking with our Natural Resources Department about, is there room? Because I know that there's concerns about resources, you know, the staff resources in that department, but there, you know, this is a, a big issue for the town.
Well, if they're not gonna have any authority, and, and they find that the compliance with all of the formal requirements of being a town board interfere with their being effective, there are perfectly good models, like things like the Garden Club.
Oh, and we did discuss that. We talked about the, the Green Thubs, the Legal Women Voters, the, you know, there are many very powerful organizations in town that are not.
Even in that envi- in that, in that area of environment where you can, you get a lot of people who are.
The Sudbury Valley Trysties, you know, there's lots of resources. And, and then, you know, they coordinate with other groups from other towns that inevitably are not town committees. So, you know, ones in Belmont that are very active, you know, relative to pollinators specifically, that aren't town boards and committees. So I think there's something that is likely to come of this. It's just that it was interesting where the conversation led. So the, the second one that I had that was interesting was not a board or committee meeting, but it was a, just a meeting with the two chairs of the Climate Action Advisory Board and the Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee, along with our new Sustainability Director. And we discussed the possibility of combining the sustainability-related committees, those two committees, into a single entity going forward. And so we're now circulating a draft charge. In the next couple of weeks, the CAB and the CSEC plan to meet, and they will hopefully be able to discuss and give their feedback on this. And then we, as a board, would look at this charge and possibly form a new committee, a successor committee.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay. And the working title is the Climate Action Committee.
Okay.
Now, I don't know. All right. Okay.
That's something that, you know, we ought to be thinking about is finding, looking at committees that tend to overlap each other, or.
Yeah, it's been our goal.
And if we could reduce the number. I get the feeling sometimes that the committee structure actually gives, makes more work for us and not less work for us.
Yep. Well, what's the score right now on how many committees have each of us formed or consolidated?
Right.
Anyway, all right.
Right. So the year I was chair, we started with that goal, Henry, that we were gonna consolidate. By the end of the year, we added four or five committees.
But I think we're going okay this year.
There should be a rule that when you commit, form a new committee, you have to abolish another one.
Right, like the free cash rule, right, right, at town meeting, yeah.
All right. I did not notice any correspondence in our packet, so no correspondence this week from the public. So now we're ready for public comment. If you have a public comment, please come to the desk, get the microphone, identify yourself, your address, and make your comment.
Hi, I'm Rich Santoro at 625 Lowell Road. Thank you again for the opportunity to discuss 615 Lowell Road in the Barrettts Farm Historic District in the lawsuit that was filed by Artstone Builders and Mike Bushnell. The last time I made public comments in November, I and a number of residents urged the Select Board to defend the HTC's determinations, denying those HTC, denying these HTC applications, determinations that were supported by over its 260 Concordians, and were made by the HTC in accordance with the HTC rules, guidelines, and preservation goals. As you know, the HTC requested that the applicant significantly reduce the building volume of the development and to not include a two-car garage, which was found to be inappropriate and damaging for the historic district. We voiced that it was important for the Select Board to defend the HTC's determinations, not only for the protection of Hilders Corner, but also because it is critical to support our HTC, to ensure that our citizen volunteers can effectively do the important work they've been entrusted with by the community, to defend and protect Concord's unrivaled history, scenery, and architecture. Otherwise, a dangerous precedent would be created that important HTC decisions can be ignored and overturned if a developer uses threats in litigation, which is concerning for our historic districts as a whole and the public trust and function of the HTC. We also ask for transparency from the Select Board so that the residents of Concord can understand the Select Board's position in this matter, particularly given the intense public concern over this development. Despite this, we've heard nothing from the Select Board, other than that you have engaged in confidential negotiations with the developers for some sort of settlement, and that if there was a new plan, it would come before the HTC. We feel that the Select Board have not, has not provided appropriate public updates, nor have you published the numerous public comments you've received over the months, which has limited transparency. You can imagine that we were quite shocked to see that Mr. Bushnell has filed a new application to the HTC to develop this lot, which will be heard on January 26th, despite the still-spending lawsuit and hearing nothing further publicly from the Select Board. Most concerning, his new plans to develop the lot are just as large than the previous plans he has submitted, and also include a two-car garage, both entirely inconsistent with the previous HTC determinations. Additionally, I want to raise that someone anonymously left a printout of an email in our mailbox that indicated that the Select Board held up approvals of nominations of new HTC members in December in order to interview those candidates. I think these are the interviews that Mr. Dane mentioned earlier. In, among other things about, and I'm just gonna quote the letter, that they wanted to interview the HTC because of the present situation with the HTC, which has been the source of considerable controversy and legal. source of considerable controversy and legal cost to the town, with the prospect of more to come, it is important that a conversation take place with any candidate for appointment to the HTC to determine how they view the situation, and that they understand the HTC, like the ZBA and Planning Board, is a quasi-judicial agency of the town with legal authority and responsibility, and it's not just a design board. I can only surmise that the situation alluded to here is regarding this lawsuit and the now-pending HTC application by Mr. Bushnell. If so, I'm surprised that the select board would discuss the lawsuit and this matter now coming up again before the HTC, considering that HTC review and determinations are a public process, subject to open meeting requirements. It also gives the impression that the select board may be picking candidates based on their view of the pending litigation and this new application submitted by the developer. Given all of this, I just want to, want to ask the select board some questions to get some better understanding on these issues and your perspective. First, is the select board or the planning division encouraging and endorsing Mr. Bushnell's new application to the HTC? And if so, can you please help us understand your rationale for this, considering it does not address the HTC previous, the HTC's previous grounds for denial? Second, does the select board, its liaison to the HTC or the planning division, intend on having conversations with the HTC regarding this application prior to the January 26th meeting? And will such conversations and materials be public? If there are going to be conversations, can you please share with us what the conversations or directives will consist of? Finally, can you please provide us with some insight regarding the email I received? Was this litigation and upcoming application discussed with the nominees? And can you give us some understanding around why this was a topic for the interviews? Again, I really thank you for your time, your candor in your answers, and some visibility and thought and process regarding this important matter to the town and its residents. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment.
I'm just going to say a very quick word for Fiona Fitzgerald, 150 Barrettts Mill Road in the historic district that Mr. Bushnell has put an application in for. And I just want to show my support to Mr. Santoro, who's just spoken, and say that I also have similar concerns, the same concerns, on this very important matter.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Valamansen, 597 Lowell Road. I'd like to make a few comments. I think we've heard the basic story before, but I understand that the select and select board has to be worrying about lawsuits and title settlement before they occur. And that's on behalf of all of us. But I think in this case, it starts to be dangerous, and there needs to be more wisdom with what we're doing. The Bushnell people are now proposing to the HTC on January 26th, a house which is more than twice the size as to what the HTC recommended, plus the garage, a double garage. This lot does not allow that size of a house in the historic district. I think the HTC has done a terrific job over the past year-plus to talk to Mr. Bushnell, give him some directions and suggestions, and let him come back with a plan which is really adoptable and correct for that piece of land. So with that, I'd like to hopefully see that the HTC will be able to do their job, as they've done so far, and that the select board will support them. Thank you.
Could I respond to some of these comments?
Well, one of the things I would say is that we're, this isn't a topic on our agenda to deliberate upon, so, you know.
I would be happy to do so, that if you think it's.
And also, I think that it, it would be great if you would meet with the neighbors here, if you'd like to as an individual. I think that that's fine. I don't see any, any problem. In fact, it's part of our, our job, so.
But I assure you, we've had no discussions on this subject, other than the executive session we had with members of the, of members of the HTC, and that we had no knowledge of this most recent application.
That's correct. So I'm hearing that for the first time. And I'm, I'm like, whoa, okay, I'm writing it down, so, yeah.
But again, you know, to the extent that, you know, the, the select board does have a appointing authority for the HTC members, that indeed, the liaison typically does interview the members. And, you know, issues that are before the HTC are relevant to the discussion, so it's not an irrelevant point of discussion.
As you heard earlier, I believe it is part of our job, and I mentioned that I had interviewed candidates for other committees, and also, not just these, the ones I mentioned tonight, but also for the library committee. And I think that's part, it is part of our function and part of our responsibility.
In this case, also, we affirmed the nominations by appointing those candidates that were put forward. So the other thing is that certainly in meeting prior to any HTC meeting, that the select board cannot meet with a quorum of the HTC in a private session, absolutely could not do so. And so that's not happening. And then finally, the select board doesn't have purview over these applications. It's the HTC that has to rule on these applications. So our opinion about whatever the developer puts forward is irrelevant. So I think that's the extent to which we can.
I think that pretty much covers it.
This is really just describing the principles of how does the select board work versus how does the HTC work. That's all we can do.
Are you saying that there's absolutely no influence from the select board on the HTC on any of their decisions?
I mean, you know, influence is a funny term. I mean, certainly, we discuss topics with individuals, you know, but it, again, it's the HTC that has the authority here, and they deliberate in public session.
Hi, I'm Lansing Old, 607 Lowell Road. I'm in the butter to this 615. However, I'd just like a clarification on the decision on Esterbrook Woods. Am I allowed to have a clarification on that?
I'm not sure. It depends upon what your question is, I think.
If you're free to ask.
Yes, exactly.
Can I, can I ask?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
As I read the decision, it says that Esterbrook Road now is a private way, is a private way with public access.
Right.
If I read the definition of a private way with public access, I'm allowed to travel over that road with a motorized vehicle. And if I were in a butter like Harvard University, I would be able to develop my 673 acres. Do you know that?
I think you should look at, first of all, the, the covenants that cover that property, but then, secondly, I can't speak to the accessibility of that way.
Well, I've read about 10 decisions on that, on what that means. Private way with public access.
You're not the only one who is uncertain about the significance.
But this is an act, action that's on appeal, so certainly there will be further discussions in court.
I hope it's, the appeal changes everything. But anyway, thank you for letting me do that.
Oh, thank you for asking.
Okay.
Okay. Further public comment? Yes?
I don't have much, Dad. My name's Nancy Traversi. I live at 8 Barrettts Mill Road in Hildreth House, right across the road. And I just want to show some support for my colleagues, friends, just the concerns about, around the transparency. It sounds like there is the possibility to speak, which I think would be gratefully received. I think we're just, we were all very surprised to see this new application after multiple, multiple rounds with the historic district commission, who I think handled themselves very well. It was very fair. I don't know how many times we've been through this, but it, it was just a bit worrying, I think, to, to know that there has been these discussions, there's a pending lawsuit, there's a new HTC members being appointed. We felt there wasn't transparency, maybe that was just, maybe that isn't the case. But I feel like we do have concerns about this new application that clearly is in, flies in the face of everything that's already been turned down on multiple occasions so far, so.
Well, that's the value of having sessions like this, and it's really, I think, is really fine that we had so many people come in person tonight to speak with us, and we're able to at least help you along the way, even if we can't answer all the questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
All right.
Oh, okay, we'll get to the Zoom momentarily. Go ahead. Those present get priority.
Okay, thank you. My name's Kelly Crozier. I live at 108 Barrettts Mill Road. I am here in support of Mr. Santoro and the, our neighbors here, and I thank you for the clarification and the information that we just had in exchange of. I just want to stress that I, as a 21-year resident of the Barrettts Mill Road District, someone who's gone through numerous projects, a large house renovation and a very old antique house, we've worked with the HTC. I've been through the process. At times, it can be difficult, but I certainly respect their work. I certainly respect everyone's volunteer time and their interest in keeping the charm and character of the town. I think for this particular project on Lowell Road, I think that I've been struck by the fact that this is an intersection of, it's a unique area because we are bound by North Bridge on one side with the Minuteman Park area, Hildreth Corner, and then Barrettts Farm. And I think that the town, the HTC, the select board, I really urge everyone to be incredibly thoughtful and supportive of the HTC's work, and particularly with this new application, that we preserve the character and integrity of this district. We choose to live in historic homes, antique homes, we're stewards of them. It, at times, can be difficult, but I'm really proud to live in a historic home and be part of Barrettts Farm District. And I just urge the support from the select board for the work that the HTC does. And I, I hope that this new application is reviewed and the same tenants and guidelines are applied. It is very disconcerting to see this new application. I think as a resident who has sat in, in the meetings and participated and discussed with neighbors, I feel as though the applicant is kind of flaunting a little bit of all of the work that was put forward and the advice. So I just ask that there be uniformity in the support to the HTC, and thank you for your time tonight and all your work on behalf of our historic districts, and thank you to my neighbors.
In terms of the treatment of the new application, having talked to the new members appointed to the committee, I can assure you, they are outstanding candidates, and they were the ones who were nominated originally, you know, with the, with the supervision or with the efforts of the committee itself, and two of them live in historic districts. So I think you should have no fear that there will be any adverse prejudice based on the new members of the committee. I think they will do an outstanding job, however it comes out.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Other public comment?
I just, I don't want to overextend, but I just was, as a follow-up, hoping to get an update on where the litigation stands then. Last time we had left, you had said you were working on negotiations with the developer.
I don't think we have any updates.
And we are not, we are not, we were not working on, we're not negotiating with anyone.
Oh, okay.
And to the best of my knowledge, although we, we, I think we suggested that the, the commission itself be open to negotiation with the applicant, I don't think, as far as we know, anything has taken place.
Right. In the past, the HTC has negotiated with applicants in order to try to improve their projects, and they didn't want to nominate someone to do that this time.
I noticed that the town has not filed an answer to the complaint. Does the town, is, will the, I mean, I know you might not be able to opine on litigation strategy, but there is a standing extension about negotiation and filing an answer. Will the town be filing an answer to, to defend the suit? Or, just wondering if, where the status is on that.
I don't think we.
The status as a matter of public record, you can, I'm sure you have looked at the docket for the case, or that, so you know that it's where it, it stands, and that's a pretty accurate representation of, and we know nothing other than that at this point.
That's fair. Thank you.
All right. I think that, yes, let's take a, a public comment from the Zoom.
Hi, Tanya Galus, 62 Prescott Road. My comment has to do with the 250th celebrations committee activities. I understand that there is a form where individuals or groups can apply for grants to port, for, for participating in the celebrations. I was just going to suggest that this form be made available by the subcommittees to, or by the committee itself, to anyone who might be interested, and not just be circulated among members of subcommittees, so that everyone can participate or offer something to do.
Is it posted, Henry?
What?
The form to, the form for grant, or applications?
I didn't, I actually don't know what she's referring to.
Well, there's a, I think there's a grant application form for the 250th. Various people put in grant applications.
That may be, what I will say is that all the subcommittees file their agendas with the town clerk, and they, and at least as diligently as most town committees, they file their minutes with the town clerk, and their meetings are open to the public and can attend the meetings.
Yeah, but I do think there is a form, and I don't know, maybe we could try to track that.
This is, this is not about their meetings being in public, they are. I am, I believe that, for, for example, in the arts and culture subcommittee, the focus has been on inviting its own members to submit proposals for grants. And I don't, you know, while it's fine to invite different arts organizations in town to submit proposals, I think a subcommittee should do more than just inviting its own members to submit applications.
Okay. I think we'll, we'll try to track that down and see if we can.
Thank you.
All right. I think then we are done, unless there's any other public comment. I'd like to adjourn the meeting at just three minutes over, which for us is.